All right, folks. Just want to say, uh, welcome to our July monthly meeting. I know we're running a little late today, but, uh, we're gonna, uh, start this off. Anybody that is new, I would like you to introduce yourself, please. Uh, you can just stand up or.
Hi, Mike Irwin, uh, just been a member for a little bit, first time up here, pleased to meet you all. We're doing, uh, we're here at the Observatory and enjoy it, thank you very much. Yeah.
Thank you.
Air Force, Air Force in front of Bill Engberg. Who's been, been away so long, he ought to introduce himself.
Yeah.
Bill Engberg, long time member, haven't been here in a little while, I'm glad to be back.
Glad you're here.
Get out of here. New member of either. Oh, my God, I didn't figure that out. You heard my wife, here's. Harold B. Oh, yeah. Yeah. You're one of the lawyers, okay, all right. Okay. I'm there now.
We're lucky to have Peter, and I tell you that he's a real lawyer. Oh, I like that. The kind of read, can read right. And, uh, so if he sticks around, we, we can make use of him.
Yeah, you know, Bruce.
That kind of thing doesn't take any brains though, Peter. That just falls with the facts.
Was there any other, other people that want to introduce themselves this evening?
I probably should introduce myself, Matt Christensen, long time member, but, um, I get just graduated, I'm by the telescope, so I'm back.
Matt, we're glad you're here. We're happy y'all are here this evening, thank y'all.
So you're Ed's brother? When you were standing up there a while ago, I said, if that's Ed. Then I saw it.
All right, folks, um, uh, Rocky, if I'm correct, you have some awards you wanted to give out? Are you ready for that?
Yeah.
Can, can I make an announcement?
That's because you're speaking into it, Rocky, that's why. Yes, ma'am.
This may be of interest to y'all, uh, emails with Mike Hewitt, see if he's getting better, yes, yes. And if you read the news about the exposure on the offshore rig, it was not seen by email. I don't know what they're talking about, but thank you for your concern.
And he's actually looking that up on the internet, trying to find out who it was, because it wasn't him. So that's a, that's a good thing.
Okay, uh, Arthur Allen Lee was, was the gold award.
Yeah, the gold level for Library Telescope Award, because he's, he's done bad work with them. I appreciate you a lot, and, uh, Darcy has earned, Darcy has earned, um, the ones she's gotten is the Constellation Award for Northern Constellations. She sent off, we've sent off for her Sun Spotter Award and Outreach Award, her first Outreach Award, but she's pretty well qualified for all levels of it.
Now, a report from the.
Hold on up, Carl.
A report from the Eclipse Committee, uh, June fourteenth, fifteenth, and sixteenth, we were at the Summer Convention Municipal League, and, uh, had a display booth there, met lots of people from different cities. Uh, for June sixteenth and seventeenth, we were at Rosebud Summer Fest, and if you notice, I said sixteen twice, so on that Friday, Chris and Rocky had to go set up the canopy and stuff and get things ready for us. We drove out a little walk, went to Rosebud, then from, from the, uh, seven o'clock morning, we had to start there at the convention. On June twentieth, we were at the Ford House Library, did a hands-on program with their summer reading program. Uh, for June twenty-first, we were at the Faulkner County Library, they were having solstice day, so they were celebrating the, uh, the, uh, sun being as far north as it ever comes on the, the, um, was it Tropic of Cancer? Uh, on June twenty-fourth, you, we were at the Pedigree Mountain State Park with our display, and the, uh, did a short PowerPoint for the crowd there, uh, for some of the programs, and then July the eighth, uh, this morning, we were at the Selen County Library, had a ten AM program there for, uh, for the public, and it was the PowerPoint too about the Arkansas Experits. Uh, this next week, we started Hot Springs, Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday. It's the A D E R, Department of, uh, Education Summit, it's kind of, kind of takes a, uh, place for the teachers for, then to pick up continuing, continuing hours. But we're also going to get to see superintendents and, uh, food personnel, everybody that works with the school districts.
Thank you, Carl. Carl and Darcy, thank you all very much. Thank you, Rocky, and everybody that's helping them out, and, uh, if you feel like volunteering and wanting to help out with them throughout the state, please reach out to Carl and Darcy. They're always grateful to have people to help them out and to help educate on the eclipse coming up this next year. I was just there for the, you know, the monster trucks. I've got, um, is anybody working on any projects or anything that they want to share with the group? Okay, we'll get, we'll get to you there, so you, John. Anything else, any other announcements that y'all want, want to bring up? All right, well, then, uh, we'll start out and we'll, we'll bring John up here and, uh, have you do your presentation, sir.
One question, Mike.
Yes, sir.
Are you, is this in confluence with something you're doing too, or am I?
You're, you're it, just show some pretty pictures and then we'll get this business.
Okay, I can do that.
Milky Way's coming into view.
Milky Way, we can do the red lights, we can. Sure, please.
Turn that off, and then we turn these on. I recall.
Yeah.
Amber's the new red.
That's, that, yeah, that's.
The, uh, they actually started putting amber nightlights in hospitals.
Amber, this devoid of blue, blue is biologically. Yeah. And yet.
And yet you can still see some color.
It makes a better, uh, uh, night sky chart.
All right. Uh, color. Ready? You want to run it there and I'll just talk? Okay, huh, photographing the Milky Way, or how to take something simple and make it really hard? Um, and I have to tell a little backstory here, because, uh, uh, I've been doing this Milky Way stuff for like twenty or thirty years. I'm back all the way to film days. And it's kind of challenging, but, uh, what I, I used to jump through all these hoops, and I would take my little Nikon Coolpix and do multiple exposures and put them together and try to clean it up on the computer and try to have something. The thing about the Coolpix is I had this little fisheye lens I could put on it that would actually do the whole sky, and I could do it in one shot, but I had to actually put it on a drive so that I could take long exposures, multiple ones, and try to get something out of that little eight bit camera. And, uh, I remember doing that at Mulberry Mountain, one of those star parties I did it, and, uh, I've got some of my first shots. Well, now, now I'm looking on Facebook, and it's a thing. It didn't used to be a thing, now it's a thing, people are going out because they've got these cameras that are less like whiz bang, super duper ISO one million, and they can take the picture, one frame, and get a picture of the Milky Way. I'm thinking, wow, that would have come in handy twenty or thirty years ago, but, uh, so it's a thing, now they go out and they'll get a waterfall or something in front, and of course, if you do it at night, the waterfall turns into a smear because it's a time exposure and, and I finally, this guy at Boonville posts constantly, I'm trying to remember, John Wag. And I finally said, so are, how many exposures are you taking? Oh, just. In a month. Okay, well, so I'm gonna take it to the next level, because I can't, I can't beat that. If they can do that in one exposure, now I'm gonna go to the next level and see if I can get more deeper Milky Way pictures with the equipment I have. Which is a kind of a double challenge, because, um, it's completely different than taking the galaxy pictures and stuff you're used to. In fact, in some ways, it's harder, you know, you don't have to worry about guiding typically, you can almost not guide, and almost not have a tracking device, but, uh, you, what you do have to deal with is all these weird gradients and lining up different images, because they're all very distorted and you can't match them up easily. Uh, the computer part of it has come a long ways and allows me to do a lot more. I want to show you something that those guys don't get. See that stuff going way out there, way past Scorpius? That's in the Milky Way, that's a dust lane. They don't get that, because they don't know how to make their camera do that, so. Anyway, how to make something simple hard, I have to always. So, and then I put the Bruce sent me an email, I posted one of these pictures for his festival. He said, why are there stars in trees? I flippantly responded back, said, that's natural light pollution, those are lightning bugs that built up over many frames. And you just keep them, yes. Of what? Yes, yes, you can, you can cheat. Yeah. But, and, okay, that's a whole other talk. Okay, photography is cheating, okay, if you take a picture, you're cheating. Because your eye, in fact, if you look at something, you're cheating, if you ever looked at the undocked linear picture from a, from a camera, it's all black almost, because maybe with one little white spot, because your brain is cheating. So, now, now it becomes a degree rather than a difference. So when I, when I doctor things up, yes, I make the sky kind of a neutral color. It's not, it's not, it's really kind of yellow. Uh, partly because of light pollution, partly because of just natural sky glow. Um, so to make this picture, this is probably somewhere in fifty or sixty five minute shot combined together. Of course, the horizon is just ruined, because I'm tracking the sky, right? So that becomes a whole separate set of stacks, and then I have to put it all back together. But otherwise, if I don't do all that, I'm just doing the single, you know, what these guys are doing. I have to submit, John, I sent him an email a while back, he went to a spot I knew, and he said, yeah, I had to wait out in the middle of that creek because the trees are in the way. I said, yeah, I know that spot where you were, and, and he's prolific, I mean, he goes, he makes work out of it. Anyway, next shot. Yeah. What's a matter? You said it would be easy. Are you got PowerPoint? Where it's, your mouse sees it?
Which location was that?
That was in, uh, Boston, Arkansas. And a friend of mine from college has property up there that's about twenty-four hundred feet elevation, and, uh, it's bortle two, I think, as high as you can go, or low as you can go in Arkansas. My plans are to go to Oketex and mop up and try to get the rest of it. Uh, they're actually doing Oketex earlier this year, which means I get, the, the core doesn't go down quite as quickly. Um, everybody's saying, oh, it'd be hot, uh, skeptic core, the core, it'll be there. So that's what I want to get is the core. And also with really good horizons, which he has, you can get the part that's in the trees. So what I am at is right, right down on the southern horizon, and, uh, we're gonna kind of go through some of the objects and stuff. Another thing I'm doing with these pictures, that's maybe a little different than that first one, is I'm using a narrow band filter, which is normally a thing that you think of, take pictures of the goon and some of these things where you fill up the whole frame with nebula. You don't have to that way, you can have a whole bunch of nebula's in one picture, you just have to have your filter in front of your wide angle. Or behind it, as well, in front of it, no, behind it. So, all right, next picture. And you should get the annotation, oh. Yeah, you did, there you go, no, yeah. There, we're out of the trees, okay, so the, um, there's like this guy here, the cat's paw, it's way down, it's very difficult to do from here. We could do it from the property, but it'd be kind of light polluted down there. Um, and then some of these other numbered various, those are just emission nebula, they're nebula that's out in the plane of the galaxy. I was gonna do an animation showing that zooming out, it got, but the, the Milky Way is just us being embedded in this big pipe plate that's our galaxy. And so if we look up to the crust or down to the pipe hand, we don't see very many stars, because there's not much filling in those directions. But you look across the pie, and it's a lot of filling, so that's what we're doing, we're looking and seeing layer upon layer upon layer upon layer of all these different stars, nebulas, dark nebulas, emission nebula. Um, some of the, some of these stars are just local closer stars, and then it just fades into just immense cloud of stars, just, just go on and on and on. And we really can't see all the way across. In fact, the black hole in the center that I'll talk about is actually not quite in this picture, I think it'd be in the next one. We can't see it, not in optical light, because there's just too much junk in the way. Um, so now let's go one more. Now what we're gonna do, we're just panning up, I'm just following my picture up through the arc of the Milky Way. And there's that same emission nebula, this is darkness, this is dust and non-illuminated gas that's literally blocking the solid wall of stars. These are stars that are so many and so far away, they just look like a globe. So wrap your mind around that. And the only reason we have anything really to look at is these are some little local neighborhood stars, and then we've got some black nebula that's unilluminated, just blocking the light from the distant stuff. And then this big rift here, well, these guys don't stop, they go all the way across, this guy's just blocking it, because this is not a flat picture, this is a three D thing you're looking.
Little stars we're seeing there are closer to us.
They, yeah, some of these black ones are, but then, then as you go back, you know, you're looking off into the mist, you know, you're just seeing just solid low stars that don't even resolve as individuals. And then you're seeing this stuff that's kind of in between, and then every once in a while, you get these hydrogen clouds that work like a fluorescent light fixture. There's enough ultraviolet light coming off of some very close stars that are making these clouds glow in their characteristic chemical color, which for hydrogen is pretty much red. I have a little difficulty with my narrow band filter making all the colors just right, so it kind of came out a little bit orange in this case, but it was at the expense of maybe making these look less green. So you kind of have to make some trade-offs, again, nothing is real, right, it's all degrees. Okay, a little higher, we're gonna go the next one, that would be an annotated version. So here, uh, where we go, there we go. So the lagoon right there, the part that we like to look at with our telescopes is just this little part right here, but it keeps on going, it's just dimmer and dimmer. Um, and, uh, some of the, there's a lot of globular clusters that are in this area, there's a real good one right there in the A. Oh, gosh, there's millions of things in that spot, uh, the next slide up, let's go ahead and go one more, oh, the butterfly cluster, and some of those open clusters that are very nice, kind of low. So now the lagoon C is now down here. And, uh, yeah, you can leave it there, leave the annotated one, it's fine. So now there's the lagoon, then you get on up, there's a tripod, which is, has the little blue component to it, that's just a reflection nebula, reflection nebulas are blue because they only are illuminated by reflected light. Whereas these emission nebulas are fluorescent light fixtures. Uh, I probably ought to explain that, these fluorescent light fixtures, there's a, there's a, well, they're all being changed out to LEDs. There's an arc tube in there with mercury in it, and that makes ultraviolet light. Well, that wouldn't be a very good thing to read by, it'd be kind of bad for you, actually. So they coat the inside of the tube with the phosphor. The ultraviolet light makes the phosphors glow in whatever combination of colors they want, and you get white. Well, nature doesn't really care about the colors and the composition, they, it just gives you red. And so you get red from these emission nebula. And so this is kind of like Times Square or the Milky Way. Um, you're looking pretty much down the center, and there's just a million things, not many galaxies, because the galaxies are off beyond the Milky Way, and there's too much stuff in the way to really see them. But all the stuff that's in our galaxy, the nebulas, the little globular clusters, um, there's an open cluster in the three, just all sorts of things, uh, there's the, uh, M seventeen, that's the Omega. Um, all those emission nebulas that we all look at with our telescopes, well, this kind of puts them in context. All right, let's go on up, we'll go a little further north. Yes. It can, but not with amateur equipment. We're gonna go north like an arrow, okay, why am I saying like an arrow, anyone know, yeah, this is with. Yeah, Sagita, excellent, it's a star, funny. So, let's go to the annotated one. Sagita. Uh, I like Sagita, he's kind of a overlooked little guy. He only has these two, there's a couple of stars here, star there and star there, and supposed to be an arrow, kind of. Um, he has a really nice cluster located right in here, it's worth a look, it's an odd one. It doesn't really look quite like a normal globular cluster, and that's a whole nother talk, so I'm not gonna go into all that, but it's, it's worth a look, because it's a little different than the other one, the other globular clusters that tend to hang around the galaxy. Now, the, uh, where we get on up further north, we're gonna get back into the emission nebula more. Um, so like here, we're just seeing the continuation of the star clouds, and you'll notice this is winding its way up through, it's just as huge, I call it the rift, it's just a huge dust lane that's blocking access to the Milky Way. If there wasn't for all the dust, the Milky Way would look very different. Let's go north again, past the arrow. Okay, this is the foxy neighborhood, why do I call it foxy neighborhood? That's right, Volpecula. Ever heard the term, uh, what they say, the, the volpine cunning of that person? That's saying they're foxy, foxy tricky, they're clever. That comes from this, the, the fox is, is the volpine. Uh, I don't know that it's not much of a constellation, there's, it's in peace of it. All I know, and this is the only thing I know about Volpecula, is that dude did M twenty-seven, now he's a little different. He is not an emission nebula, he's actually a star that sort of whimpered and died, and at the end, you know how Carl puff smoke, but it's not right, it kind of, it kind of, stars kind of do that too, and and it glows, because the star remnant inside is lighting it up with, as the fluorescent light effect. And so my camera picks up that, though, that gets highly photographed at much more magnification, but in this case, um, it's kind of just a little dot, very bright, but still just a gas, a gas ball. These guys are just the emission nebula, again, they're just, emission nebula is just kind of leftovers, clouds in space. And eventually they will collapse and make more stars, they say. Um, but, uh, uh, this area starts to become very intriguing, because as you get further north, you start seeing a lot more of the emission nebula that my filters allow us to see. This filter, what it does, just for a little information, is it, it only lets nebula light through. All other light is greatly diminished, which means the Milky Way is greatly diminished from what it would be. But it also diminishes the light pollution and everything else, so it actually worked out pretty good. Uh, I was gonna shoot it just with no filter, and I started realizing the filter actually made it, made it a better composition, tell more of what was going on. Okay, let's go one more slide. And now we're gonna do the swan song, so obviously that is. Cygnus is, of course, one of the favorites. The reason though it's one of the favorites is an interesting because we're kind of in the black suburbs of this huge metropolis. And, you know, we'd be like Cabot, maybe, maybe not even Cabot, maybe we'd be Ward. And so when we look toward Little Rock, we see a lot of stuff, that's Sagittarius and all that. But when we look toward Bald Knob, not so much. Not the. Although, I wouldn't pick that thing, that's it. Not, not the Doc Bald Knob, but, but there's not as much to see that direction, but because the, our galaxy has arms and is a spiral galaxy, if we look along the direction of the arm we are in, we actually do see, because there's more going on there. More star formation, more, more gas, more dust, and it's closer. So when we look towards Cygnus, that's what we're doing, we're now looking kind of sideways across the disc from the center, we're, we're looking perpendicular from, from the center, but not up or down, we're still looking in the plane of the Milky Way. And it, it, the, the plane goes all the way around, even in the wintertime, there's Milky Way, but it's kind of puny, isn't it? Because you're looking out into Bald Knob, and it's just not as much there to see. So next time you think about serious astronomical things, and really, Captain, we all are. And, uh, there's a lot of stuff out there we look at long, so anyway, back to this, we're at, we're in all kinds of interesting things, there's all sorts of nebulas, uh, in, in, uh, Cygnus that are good to photograph, some of which are good to, to observe with telescopes. By the way, you can get a little filter for your telescope that allows you to see nebulous better, and it works well with your eye. Mine filter is actually a little bit different in that it's looking at the red and the green. The filter for your eye is pretty much just green, because your eye is not very sensitive. The camera, again, expanding the reality of cheating, I'm cheating, cheating. I'm cheating so I can see, cheat, so I can show you something that's really there, that's not ordinarily. So the swan song, we're getting up, up into this arm. Okay, I think we have one more. Yeah, we gotta look at the tail feathers. Cygnus. By the way, you know what uh baby swans are called? Signets. Does it's a, yeah, signets. Cygnus. That is fine sound. He just never gets. But that's okay, because he's got a lot of stuff to look at. This is kind of his belly button sater and then that is tail feathers. You won't say anything derogatory there. But there's, there's all kinds of nebula. The, this is called the butterfly nebula. And it's really one nebula with a dark nebula in front of it. Again, layers. There's a lot of layers going on here. We just, it, we can look out the window and see the front yard from this one viewpoint. There's trees and the street and newer houses across the street. But we can't really see behind the neighbor's house, can we? Because we have, we're in this one wind. But we know the layers are there. We know the trees are there. We know every, all the layers are there. We just can't get looked off to the side and look around. What you mentioned was we can cheat and look through. But that's infrared stuff. That's kind of what the weapons do. Cause it's set up for that. Uh, I'm doing mostly optical. It's interesting, those CCD cameras and, and other types of electronic media, usually you have to filter the infrared out because infrared doesn't play nice with the color filters in your camera. It, it doesn't obey the traffic laws with all the optical colors. So if you don't filter out the infrared, you won't get the color. This separation. So in this case, um, the neb up here, the neb is the tail feathers. I used to think that was the front of it. That's the, but yeah, these lines out. And he's got a couple of open clusters and then uh, um, somewhere in here is the crescent. I probably passed that. It's a really, I call it the bum print. Uh, but uh, anyway, that's my goal. I want to get the rest of it all the way around to this level of detail. I also want to maybe, I'm experimenting with lenses, try to get the stars a little bit sharper. That's a challenge too, because camera lenses are good, but they're not that good. This is like the hardest thing you can make them do, is take pictures of stars. Anything that's wrong, it'll show. And uh, I don't know, you said short, so I did it. That's all I got.
Good question, John.
Yeah.
You, you, you've been doing this for years and your pictures are amazing. I've always admired the way you post there. People who try to do these one shot, what are they using? The phone cameras?
No, they're using like, they're using modern, uh, like Canon cameras. They're, they're, they're using full, full size chip cameras and they could, they can run the ISO up to twelve thousand and and I could do that on my camera, but you'd see a lot of hot pixels and not much else. Cause mine is an older generation camera. It just won't do it.
So they never went, they don't need a guide or anything? They just put it on a camera stand?
They just put it on a tripod and they'll shoot fifteen, twenty second shot. And they'll get almost this, but they don't get this deep stuff.
Yeah, I guess and tell people, just let people know that our members so that they can come up here and take some pretty pictures. There we go. That'd be pretty cool.
Yeah, it's amazing what they can do because it didn't use to be that way. And uh,
We all can get a little practice too.
Yeah.
Yeah, you can get, some of them do have little.
Up and actually see it. You can't see this in, in Little Rock or in Cabot or whatever.
No, I really can't even, I've about determined I can't photograph this from here. Even with filters and everything else, I gotta have the dark sky to really get
Yeah.
all this feathering out that it does, because it's really huge. It, the Milky Way, the central bulge is apparently, which is the center. It goes way out here, but a lot of it's covered by dust and stuff. And then it just, it's just getting fainter and fainter, you know, it doesn't just end right there. Because it, it's sort of a wispy, you know, it just keeps going.
And I think some people would just be happy with the center area. They should uh try that out here or some other dark place.
Yeah, sure.
Can you give us the breakdown of the costumes and your clothes? I mean, thousands of dollars, I mean, hundreds, thousands of dollars.
Well, I don't use it all. Yes.
A lifetime, you know. Like just standing.
Microphone.
Huh? Yes, what? Yeah, you can get a tracker now. They sell Facebook, I'll see advertising for little trackers you can get. Take Milky Way pictures. It's the same. Who'd have thought? I thought I was the only one. Now people that, that have never done any other astronomy, they say, I'm an astrophotographer. And it's just amazing. Well, they are, they're doing it, but and I, I admire them for doing anything, you know, but but it, 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 it is a little aggravating when you've been doing it this long and worked this hard to get where you are, but that's, that's the nature of technology. Yeah, uh, it's in one of them. I saw it. Uh, I forget which one it shows it, but uh, yeah, it's a beautiful, yeah, so many stars, it gets lost a bit. Oh, one thing I was gonna say, that's a curiosity of doing these pictures. And if you look at a lot of the Milky Way pictures, and I'm not picking on these guys, I admire them doing what they're doing. But I am a little bit because I'm a little bit jealous that they're fancy camera. Anyway, they, a lot of them, you can't see the constellations. And in my picture, you really wouldn't be able to either. So what I have to do is I separate the stars from the background continuous stuff with software. And then I'll copy the star layer and dim it way down to where I just get a few bright ones. And then I'll blur them and then brighten them back up. So that, because the only way you can make the constellations look right is to make the bright stars a little bit bigger. Otherwise they all look, it looks like salt and pepper and you just can't see any. But there really is information in your picture for how bright they are. You just have to do this trick. So graphically, the eye can see it as a brighter image, because I can't display on a screen, the true dynamic range of the image. The stars are so, so, so much brighter than this faint stuff that we'd be blinded by the screen if it could really do it to be able to see this stuff. If that makes sense. The screen can't display that. So you do little tricks to, to make it almost like a map. Trying to make it where the eye recognizes what you wanted. Yeah. Yeah, that was hard. It took me a long time to figure out a good way to do that. I knew I needed it. I kept asking people, how do you do it? Well, you know, I yeah.
They didn't want to hear their fishing hole with you.
Yeah, so this is how I do it anyway. Is, is I do this little trick and that way now you can see Scorpius and you can see Sagittarius. Otherwise they just need specs. Any else? It's a good question. Mostly it's, it's just fun. It's kind of good presentation. Thank you.
I just want to say I absolutely adore the supernova pictures that you took in the comparison.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Being able to show that comparison.
Yeah, I want to get another one because I, last I heard, it's, well, my guy still shows. Yep. So I gotta get one more. Sorry.
Okay, I've got it. This, this, this boat's a commercial on my part. The festival is coming, our dark sky festival.
Hold on here, hold on. Yeah, they can hear you over that one.
Yeah, the dark sky festival is coming up September fourteen through sixteen. And uh, we'll have another photo contest this year. We've got, I think, seven categories. Uh, one of which is astrophotography, but the rest of it is various forms of night sky photography. And uh, last year we had this young man, Eric Stenick, who worked, did a workshop on he's one of the guys doing what uh, John's just talking about. He did a little workshop. Yeah, yeah, he did a workshop last year and uh, we got three of them this year. And we're gonna have that as a separate registered, registered uh, event. And uh, one of the people apparently is a is sort of a dean of this, is to hear the younger guys, the two younger people involved, talk about it. How somebody, I, I should have looked it up. How? Yeah, he posted on our on the Facebook page, Natural Sky Association.
What?
Joined our club for a while, so he looked at all our pictures and kind of learned how to do it.
Who did?
Kim Erz. Uh. Now he sells.
Yeah, now he sells.
Yeah, yeah, I like, I like.
But uh, so we're gonna have a separate registration class for that and it'll be a hands-on thing as well as a as a uh, you know, presentation and that's it.
Well, the big thing is we can keep observing past ten o'clock, right?
Yeah. No perky.
This uh, same one that Amber Strong is familiar with.
Yeah, Amber Strong's gonna be our, our, our principal speaker with the Space Telescope. Ark, Arkansas girl.
She's gonna give a talk and use the A, uh, but not before they eclipse. So she's got a backside, I can tell it's easy.
Oh, is that right?
Totally flipped, yeah.
Good.
Have the A, she's making D branch.
B branch?
Yeah, she's from B branch.
Bald Knob.
And we probably could use some more telescope volunteers, by the way.
How many you have now?
I haven't added enough. We got about a little over forty volunteers altogether, probably uh, less than half of those are telescopes. Chris is one.
Michael Barelli.
Mike is there.
Will you please step up here? I'm gonna need your help here. First, first thing, has, has everybody signed in?
I haven't.
Everybody but Bruce, that's because he was all right, um, the rest of this meeting is basically, it's gonna be an open forum to an extent. Um, what I'm talking about is where we are gonna be going with the club and some things that need to, that we need to work on to just help out wise and uh, where we're asking for different volunteers for, for different uh, committees and stuff. Uh, we have a uh, if I'm correct, we have a committee that's, that, for this next year. Uh, I might need some help from, from Darcy and Bruce on that one for clarification for up at the Capitol. Where we uh, are gonna be setting up a display from CAS uh, that is gonna be on display for a few months at the Capitol.
Our underclass, the lady from the state capital, putting together, where she's needing resources from, like the astronomy lab and computer for historical stuff. We're up there now, I think it's the Marsh County, wanted to see what they have. They have marshals, uh, federal marshals display. Have probably every time that he's in that force camp. But we're gonna split together, but she wants to come from us to put him in that, she needs to know things we got.
Yeah, so you know, I was thinking, you know, a picture of our, so John took a nice picture of our observatory in the air. With his uh, health card that provides, that we might offer that, but uh, then the uh, Halley's Halley's Comet was a big thing for CAS back, what, seventy, when was that?
Eighty-six.
Eighty-six?
I think eighty-six.
Yeah, and we handed out certificates to people who came to see the comet. We probably could find one of those maybe. I'm thinking likely of the most where one of those is. And uh, we probably have some pictures from that that we could put in there, things like that.
What about the group that's trying to uh, how should I say, resurrect that uh, digger tractor, remember? Here uh,
We need to make sure that they know about that.
The north, the north Arkansas.
Yeah.
Uh, uh, yes.
It wasn't an Arkansas telescope, but they're trying to resurrect it. We built an observatory here based around in Arkansas.
Yeah, it was brought back here by, by Ken and them and then they're raising money to actually get it put back together. Uh, and then also uh, just maybe even some different photographs that members have taken from here at the club to help out with some dates on it, so. No, this is to go up to, to uh, state capital for the display.
They have display areas up there and they changed the theme every once in a while. And I think it's because the eclipse, they decided to.
Somebody have an antique telescope, uh, the Braxton, I guess it was, they were taking out.
My staff, I think recently had a uh, had the last uh, presentation up here of Arkansas. But we did die, so. I think you're
You know, we ought to put a library telescope in there. We got one, we ought to put it in there with a map of all the, where all the libraries are.
If we have one that needs to be repaired, we can put it up there. And, and that, because it's not gonna be used.
Yeah. What about your moon? The moon thing, the, like that.
What, what you talking about?
The, the, like you're gonna think if you go with moons, but put that in and then it go around.
Well, we could get a, we could get maybe some of the, somebody to send us a picture that they took.
Maybe once or twice a week.
Put in that point there.
Maybe something about the, the meteor, the hip. Or the um, what was they talking about? Oh, it's Paragon, Paragon.
Paragon.
Sure, that'll be in there. That's historical, it's probably, yeah.
But old members ought to look at the, have photographs, all their photographs and see if they find anything from the Halley's Comet.
How about Plum Bay U? Oh, something on that, because that's a what? Plum Bay U was astronomical. I mean, they're
Oh, that's right. Yeah, they ought to get them involved.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, uh, also, uh, we have an outreach committee. Ac- actually, we have, we have well, actually you and Daryl are part of our outreach committee and we're asking for some additional members to volunteer to help them out. Uh, so, so that if there's a time where you can't, where you can't make it or uh, just, just to help out on uh, you know, help with the scheduling and other things uh, and for reaching out to other members. Uh, so that we have a uh, just make it a little bit more organized and, and faster process and it's easier on all the members that way.
You don't have to.
Yes.
And I've been working on trying to get forty scouts and the drill stuff up there. They talk to me, but I, they won't call me back. I'm, I'm hounded against.
But the other thing is Darcy and Carl have done a good job of awakening the interest of people in Arkansas with the eclipse coming up. And that may be a good opportunity for us to leverage that to expand our outreach and maybe do a few other things with some schools and scout troops as uh, Kit was saying, and the, the thing that we really have to look at is how do we get, put the interest? Rocky and I were talking, I think the usage of the library telescopes is way down. They're just not being used as they should. I mean, they're a good resource, but I think people's interests or whatever has kind of dwindled. And we've had to rejuvenate interest again, like the numbers we had at the pinnacle mountain, we were like closer to a thousand before COVID hit. And now we've been hitting a couple on two to three hundred at the most. So how do we stoke up and bring back the level of interest to what it was pre-COVID?
When Darcy and Paul and those things, I see crowds.
Right. There's some, but be off of that.
And see, that's what I want to do is like have them, have him do the moon, have somebody do sanitary thing, somebody do stars and tell people about, we could let up, you know.
Well, that's good to do, but if you have too much going on at one time, it's not doing, you might have to have separate events. Yeah, or change up, but also have another event at a school or something like that, but that takes volunteers. So if you're interested in doing that kind of work, it's very rewarding. Uh, I'm teaching a class that, you guys ever hear of LifeQuest? Yeah, so it's a uh, program for seniors and that this will be the third course I'm teaching there. It's gonna be a four week course starting next week in observational astronomy. I gave one before in the fall about evolution, how the universe became into being and everything like that coming up. So this one's just observational astronomy and I could use some help when I want to bring my class up here to see stars and things. So, you know, trying to build it out that way. How do we outreach and get more interest in astronomy? Because it's a fun topic, it could be as cheap as, as, you know, John said, get a, get your Nikon camera out and take a picture. Just have your binoculars or you can spend a lot of money like some of us do.
You know, I've taken nothing like this. They're not real good. Something to show you.
Yeah.
That's what makes it accessible to somebody that doesn't have the equipment.
Right.
The eighty percent solution is always getting those tracks.
Absolutely.
You mentioned, you mentioned the library scopes. Uh, I actually spoke to the mayor of the town that I'm in and uh her and the majority of the staff there, uh, the upper staff had no clue that we, that we were participating uh in the library there and that we even had any scopes that to be checked out. And uh, and they, and they, and they, and they were, and they were, and they were looking for kids programs to do there in our city and I mentioned that and they were, and they were like, oh, well, I'm glad you just mentioned that. And so all of a sudden, it was on their next board committee. It came out the next month and then, and then it was in their, you know, one of their actual monthly flyers. Uh, yes, we've, we've reached out and Cows has helped us out with putting all these out there and our group maintains, if not, if I'm correct, the majority of them of them, uh, every once in a while, we have to reach back out to those towns to remind them other than the libraries themselves. And sometimes that helps out on pushing the public towards it. But uh, so yes, we are looking for some additional volunteers for the outreach. Uh, if you're interested in that, uh, you can reach out to me. It's chris.tody@gmail.com. Um. If not, uh, you can contact me through our, our members Facebook page, anything like that. I'll be happy to get you set up with the people and uh I am grateful for all the participation we've been having uh at the star parties. If, and we're asking, please continue and we would love to have even more people uh to participate. Uh, because I know there's always the diehard group that's there every time and we are grateful, extremely grateful. But we're asking for others to participate also, uh. There was another group, uh.
We were talking about the uh August meeting, which we're gonna make friends and family and Bruce has sent out some really nice suggestions for things we can do. We're not having a July meeting, so again, we're gonna need volunteers to help us put some things together, you know, bring in some games. We were talking about uh e- either bocce ball or uh the lawn dart, the safe lawn darts, which has got the beanbag at the end instead of the point. Can't bring yours. And then uh with the game that's called cornhole, but Bruce said we shouldn't use that name to call it bag. It's, it's cornhole, that's not even, but anyway. So we have people can have a cornhole tournament. Yes, I know. And then there's also having a, an astronomy related trivia contest. So think of these things, we've got to start putting them together now and then have people help run them because the, the leadership committee can't run all these activities, we need help. You know, especially the games where the kids are playing and, and you know, you know how kids are, they, they take a lot more supervision than than the adults, except after the adults have had some alcohol, but I hope there's not gonna be any alcohol. So, but we want to get people out here to the RRO and to experience the darker skies, get to know other members, see what we can do.
And I could use help on children's art.
So uh, we'll, we'll be sending out some emails to you, the, the broad spectrum, but the people that actually come here are the ones that we think we can hopefully count on more for all this. You know, that you, you could actually have some fun up here anyway and, you know, then as it gets dark, we all resort to our telescopes and we're gonna need a few of those too. All right?
And it was brought to my attention also uh tonight, um. We have a plaque out here that was, that was down uh where the beginning of our RV parking is. Uh. That we need to get a work party sometime and get that re- re erected and and, and find a spot for it, whether it be down in uh the amphitheater area or or somewhere uh up towards the building or something. And uh maybe even some updates if I was told correctly on, on members and stuff on there. Um. And so if, if anybody uh would love to help out with that, uh like I said, it should, it should, it should not take very long. Yes. It, it's, yeah, it's just, these are, yeah, the brass portions that we put on there, but uh.
Yeah, we have a whole list of things to do this fall up here, right after the festival.
Uh, I fully understand, sir. I'm just, I'm just, I'm just reaching out now so that some people actually understand that.
We may need to put a new floor in in there.
That, that, that we have a, a, a list of plenty of volunteer opportunities.
Yeah. And we gotta all fix, decorate that area up and the flag. And by the way, I, I want everybody to look at the wildflower garden.
Beautiful. It's beautiful, thank.
That's nice.
I thought none just came out of that, man. I tickled the death and I wanna, I wanna put another one, you know where the butterfly bush is?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, thinking about putting a rectangular one there, partly so that it's easier to mow around there. Yeah, but we just, if we were to fill that with the wildflowers and uh we could uh straighten out the mow line and it would be a good looking. But all that's gonna take a little work. So we will need volunteers, but we do that stuff.
And the butterfly bu- bush.
We'll just build it in here, maybe. But most of that we'll do in a fall.
But I think our big focus is gonna be the first thing is that August meeting, we, we want to have fun, we want to get as many members as we can out here and we want to make it family friendly.
Friends, families and neighbors says the.
Yeah. Right.
And we'll probably have a spaghetti dinner and uh a little later than usual, so we don't have such a big gap between the dinner and the night sky. And that's when we'll have the games, uh various games, it'd be some of it for the wind for the kids, but it's not rockets. I'm assuming the usual crew will show up with the stalk rockets and the big giant bubble blowing and the balloon stuff and and so it should be, uh, should be fun. And then of course, that time of the year, you'll get some meteors.
Mm-hmm.
Usually in the evening, so people bring their blankets and their zero gravity chairs and uh we'll fill up the place and look for, look for shooting stars. Get the telescopes out, the big binoculars, some of Milky Way. So it'll all be a good time.
Since we did, not thirty years ago, I used to do the rockets, which you can fire and then parachute them down.
This, this area is not big enough. I used, I was into model rocketry when I was younger. It's just this, they're gonna end up in the trees here. It, it's just not enough room for them to come down, especially if there's a stiff wind. Well, if you want to spend the money and let them die, I hope you build them. But then they're gonna die. I still have a launcher, I, I did, didn't.
And one last thing, uh. Carl, did you want to speak about uh, uh, the volunteer teaching? Um.
When. So we're gonna get doubled up on some programs and stuff like that with, uh, I think Rocky and so I thought of.
No, but.
Uh, like we get requests for fire points, if we're gonna get hot as we get closer to twenty twenty-four, so we'll need more people able to do the fire points.
Are we just full organizations?
Or talk about volunteers in the club that, well, who's wanting to speak?
With our points.
Various organizations. Sorry, yeah.
That's good.
How many of you have Darcy done so far? Um, Darcy said they've done overseas, yeah.
No, but uh didn't, didn't, aren't you and Darcy uh starting a, a program to teach uh the different, um.
Yeah, we're working on a program.
Different groups out there.
Lead groups events like in their city.
Yeah, for leaders and.
Somebody like Nina that they want, that they say, well, y'all do our clips over, so we'll plant some in the city. Uh, we're gonna have a Booker library where we'll take the plants and we get stuff together, it'll be uh in August, a workshop from one o'clock till three o'clock. Booker library, Booker library is out of retreat. So we're still getting all that together. If we talk to the teachers next week, that's what they will, they will, uh, mention to them that they're going to sign up for that. That, that, that the success will do more, right? We're just training people to handle it and put it there for their, their good organization or for a, a park area. I do not start.
Another thing that we did is I still, after retiring from that case, I still know the principals and everything. They would love to have us come to their school and get a test. I know that for a fact. They've done it.
Carl and them are already doing a lot of that right now. Yeah, they're, they're, they're already working with the majority of the towns.
Two hundred and forty groups.
At a time.
They'd rather break smaller groups. Heard them all in an auditorium and didn't say, here's this problem. Yes, that doesn't work as good. You work with a smaller group.
Yeah, they came to my class, I told you I taught last fall, Darcy and Carl came and made a great presentation. One of the best ones that I had so many more requests after. How do we see the eclipse? How do we do this? So you see what I'm saying? Sometimes people just don't understand something, when you open their eyes a little bit, give them a little spark in their head, they want to learn more, but you don't have continuous things and mentioning, it kind of fades. It's like, hey, they're interested and it dies by natural log of exponential decay. So you, you've got to keep that level up. And the only way we can do that is we have enough volunteers to keep the public aware of what's going on.
Isn't that thing that having a stay without, running something, they don't have to stay there on Michael.
No. But you don't want to have, like I said, again, maybe one or two things and then, but also I think we just need more events, not just monthly star parties, have something else. And that's why I, one of the reasons I want to start, the weather will cooperate. We have these alternate observing sites that are nearby that we have, we have, we only had one so far and we had about twenty people out there. And we just need to get that kind of thing going.
Yeah, the temperature was eighteen degrees.
And it was. And they came.
And you're lucky to have two volunteers.
Good.
All right, was, was there, was there, was there anything else to go on to bring up this evening? I, that, does anybody uh from, from the group? Yes, sir.
Chris, it sounds like one of my thing is that city that looks at things over a twelve month period. Besides what resources we have available and then plans and the slides out, we're gonna be scheduled with dates. Clearly, and then build back from that and then put volunteers to help me at this time. Then we can just.
That's what the outreach committee that we're trying to build right now is and, and, and what we're, we're shooting for, all right? That way it makes it easier and they can submit into the board once a year when our calendars are coming up and say, hey, this is what all we have. If that makes sense, which will make it easier on the board and, and everybody else. You know, not just our regular meetings, but all the outreach and so they're not uh colliding into each other at times and uh where we actually have coverage. And this is, and this has been the big thing, is just trying to find the volunteer coverage on all of it. And everybody understands how that goes, uh, but we're just asking uh if, if you've got some time and everything and you're willing to go out and educate the public, it's awesome, all right? It'll make you feel good at the end of the night and plus the fact you'll sleep real well, I promise.
One, two, three things, as it, you know, you have to have some things planned, but especially if you're gonna just have a quickie, maybe members only or with members and friends type of thing over at like we did at the soccer field or at Two Rivers Park or somewhere else, that's gonna be weather dependent. So you gotta look and see, maybe you're gonna have lucky to get a ten day notice out and saying, yeah, Sunday or Monday or, you know, this is when someone's gonna be there and hopefully if it's not cloudy, come on out. And that's gonna be hit and miss, but you know, we'll have those too. Like we all do that anyway from when we try to observe, right?
Yeah, it's, it's two different things really.
Right.
The public star parties like we traditionally have, that you schedule way in advance and then these other impromptu.
Impromptu things, but that'll hopefully help get members more involved. We have a hundred and ten members. And how many of them do we see on a normal basis? Not a lot. I understand, but I'm trying to make you pump up the numbers a little bit. We'll see.
Other than that, folks, uh, we appreciate y'all coming out. Thank you very much, uh.
What about paying for separate boat? Why don't we get a card reader? So if somebody doesn't, can't show up, if we pay ahead, we can get our money back and not.
Getting ready to fix that. We're ahead of you, not that much, but a little bit.
All right, uh, did anybody else have any further questions or anything they want to share with the group?
Somebody talked to us. I feel like we're talking some of the obvious in our program. And Darcy would be there with, we, we came up on it, our booth would be empty there at the sun, at the range at the convention center. So, you know, anybody, I want to uh join us for a couple hours down here, that sure helps out. With the display, people's quick engage.
Carl, that was Monday, Wednesday, Monday, Tuesday and Wednesday?
Yeah, Monday, Tuesday, I do a program on Monday morning and a Tuesday, a program Tuesday afternoon. We got a program to, I speak hotel for the Tuesday afternoon and so it'd be nice to have somebody where our display was.
I'll see, I'll, I'll see, I'll see if I can help out a little bit and maybe. It, it's okay.
Not the same people all the time.
Thing, what we're having people go to the library or how are we, if they're the ones doing the stuff? That's why I remember getting them. Going to the library. So, so, being there.
Darrell, Darrell's organized one or two of those, but you know the pandemic.
Yeah, every, everything shut down during the pandemic and, and uh ninety-nine point nine percent of the things that were going but prior pandemic did not restart, okay? And uh, and so th- this is another reason why we were bringing up a few things tonight, was just so that we can get a little enthusiasm back in everybody and hey, maybe we can go out and start some of the, these programs back going again and uh get some large interest. I mean, we have, I mean, that's, that's a lot of people, for starters, a hundred. Where were we at during pandemic? Was it like almost two hundred?
What are you talking about?
The, the, the count.
At the pinnacle, we, we've had as many as six hundred.
Okay, okay, but I mean.
We've had up three hundred.
No, but I'm, I'm just saying just actual members.
Oh, members, no, we've, we've got more membership than we've ever had.
Well, right, that's been steady.
But it's not, yeah.
Yes. And so, and so this is, this is, this is part of, of what I'm, I'm wanting to bring up is that we have a lot of members right now and we're asking for a little volunteer, volunteer portions of it. And if there's something you don't understand, I mean, I'm gonna tell you right now, I'm probably one of the dumbest people in this room, all right? But I like, I like to ask questions, okay? If I don't understand it, there is a wealth of knowledge in this room that I know I can, I can literally walk up and ask someone. And, and they'll teach me, all right? Well, I, I don't have a bunch of letters, come on now. All right, now, but either way, and.
Don't question the man's credibility.
It's either, either, either way, my, my point is, is there's a wealth of knowledge in, in this, in, in this group here. And they're always happy to help you out, they're always happy to teach you and they're even patient with, believe me. I've seen some patients from a lot of them towards me that I probably didn't deserve, you know? But the main thing is, is. But the main thing is, is, is that they have been there, you know, and I'm grateful for that. And any other member should be able to be happy to reach out and ask those questions they don't know. Believe me, I've, I've seen it plenty online, and I've seen it in person up here, and nobody should be embarrassed about that and say, hey, if I can't figure it out, go ask, and someone will be happy to show you, you know? I've had plenty of people ask me about collimation, I, I had to learn, all right? I figured it out, and if I can figure out, I pretty much tell you, just about anybody can, me and a fifth grader, okay?
I started digital astrophotography, that's how I got started, John was one of my mentors, and you had Chris, and you had Don Walters, and they're very helpful, you know, you send them your first few pictures, and mine looked like crap, and John's like, don't feel too bad, it looks like crap, and I think the next time will be less. Yes, you were that nice, and, but it got to the point, I'm not as good as he is right now, but I'm getting better with each time and practice, and that's what they kept telling me, the thing you need the most is practice, 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 and you will have.
You don't show the public.
Oh, yeah, you don't. You show the ones that is better than the last, yeah. But it's, it's a fun thing, and it's, it's, it's great that the mentorship is there. And, and, you know, we've got other things, you know, Malcolm's good at it, things like astrophotography, just simply identifying constellations, the people down in the cities, they can't see the damn things, they can't. You have to take some place, and then you show them, and we've had a couple of members that the first time up here, they're going, oh my God, there's too many stars, where am I going? I, I'm serious. And that was Carl Schultz, but I don't know if you guys were here the first night, he came up with his telescope, he says, there's too many stars. I said, you've never been outside the city looking at stars? No. And a lot of people have, so just like that, it's a simple education you can give them, you know, show them how to use a planisphere, find their way around.
All right, and once again, thank y'all very much, and we'll see you next month.